Good evening, everyone. We'd like to call our Monday, December thirteenth, City Council Meeting to Order. Item two point O is the invocation. Do we have volunteered to give us the prayer? Uh, Councilman Reverend Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Gracious Father, we thank you for this beautiful day you've given us. It is again we come in your presence with open hearts and minds looking to do the business of the people in the great city of Fayetteville. God, right now, endow us with knowledge, wisdom, and understanding, and give us not just a heart, but a desire to do that which is right and just before you. Continue to bless us so that we might be united in our efforts, and continue to build us up so that we might glorify and edify you in this earth. We ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ, who is our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen. Item three point O is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. And, uh, council joining us remotely are council members Dawkins and Mayor Pro Tim Jensen. Are you there?
Uh, Dawkins here. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mayor Pro Tim?
I'm here, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. All right. Council item, um, four point O, uh, the announcements and recognition. Uh, Councilman Davis, I think we have, uh, we have a, uh, an announcement by, um, a brochure we have. You want to ask the young lady to come in and? Oh, we have Mr. Bullard. I didn't see you, sir. Well, at the conclusion of Mr. Bullard's report. Mr. Bullard, how you doing?
Very good, sir. Hope everyone's doing well tonight.
Doing well.
All right. Six hundred and thirty-eight days we've been under our state of emergency, um, for COVID. And today is the one hundred and eighth day under the current county's nuisance abatement order that requires our mask wearing. Um, we're on a bit of a roller coaster. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, holiday gatherings and things that are probably to blame for some of the numbers we're seeing. I know right now in Cumberland County, we're at ten point six percent positive of the tests that are being done, which is above that five threshold where we do not want to be. And if you look back last year to this date and time, we were at eleven point four percent. Um, what concerns me there is on January the eleventh of twenty twenty-one, we spiked up to seventeen percent. Um, that's not where we want to go. And, and part of the message tonight, I think, quite frankly, is we've been here before. We know what to do. And the reason I would qualify that, if you look at twenty twenty, there were a hundred and eighty-six people that perished as a result of the seasonal flu. Last year, there were seven. So far this year, we're about two months into it, there's zero deaths from the flu. So, the byproduct of the practices that we've employed and, and the measures we've taken has virtually kept what would have, would have killed countless people, um, previous to COVID. Um, so it proves that our infection control practices and, and those sorts of things work. Um, with the holiday gatherings and us moving indoors, and that's where this peak comes from that we experienced last year, um, we have to be disciplined and we have to do what works. And a lot of times, um, it's indoor mask and it's safe distance from people that are not part of your household, um, and that sort of thing. So, um, subject to any questions you might have, that, that's my message. We've been here before and we know what to do.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bullard. Any questions for Mr. Bullard? All right. So the resounding message, we've been here before and we know what to do. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Oh.
I mean, I'm not sure if you, um, if you are aware, but, um, with the, the libraries, um, do you know the areas that are, um, providing COVID testing and, uh, the vaccine?
Yeah, I would have to sheet and go back to the, the county websites. My primary, um, reference point. You do bring a point that I do need to mention. We have more over the counter testing resources now than we've ever had before. You literally can go where you shop and buy a rapid test.
Okay. Well, I was just, well, I'll just say for the record, um, if they, if everybody going to the Cumberland County website, because I know I was able to get my two girls, um, vaccinated. So they are going to different libraries for weeks at a time to, uh, get the, the youth vaccinated. And one more thing with the, is it the Omicron that I'm pronouncing right? We don't have any cases as a VA in Cumberland County. Is that correct or?
To my knowledge, there's not. Now, it is present now in North Carolina, but, um, again, we've been through other variants. We survived Delta somehow. I, I think it's all a condition of doing what we know works.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Bullard. Uh, Councilman Wright, you had, uh?
Yes. Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just wanted to announce that they are giving COVID shots and tests at four fourteen Hall Street, which is the church, Heal the Land Outreach Ministries, uh, our church site there. And they're giving those shots Mondays through Fridays from nine to four. And they'll be there. So they're giving all the shots, the, um, J and J, the, um, Miranda, Miranda shots and the Pfizer. Also, they're giving the boosters and shots for five-year-olds and ups, and, um, the other, uh, technologies that they're using as well. So you go on to, uh, starmed dot care, starmed dot care, and you register there. And the lines are short, so you can come in. You don't have to get out of your car. Um, they'll do everything right there in your car for you. So they'll be there, four fourteen Hall Street. Go to starmed dot care and register. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Council member Hare?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just want to reiterate what I had announced on last week that on, um, this Friday, December the seventeenth at two thirty, uh, hopefully the, my fellow council members, many of you will be joining me as we celebrate our Westover Wolverines football team for what I consider an exceptional year. And we will be doing that at the Westover Recreation Center at two thirty. Uh, I'm hearing some excitement coming in from Westover High School. And once again, I'm, I'm hoping that you all can, can put that in your schedule to come over and let's celebrate our young men together. That's going to be two thirty, the December the seventeenth at Westover Recreation Center. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Ingram?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Um, I am just coming to announce on behalf of the Cool Springs Young Town District that, uh, the city will have, um, a New Year's Eve spectacular called the Max Service. Um, the district, uh, the New Year's Eve spectacular, uh, born, uh, gates will open at, I believe, seven thirty? Yes, seven thirty PM. It's a school-free event where families can come out and enjoy New Year's Eve. Performers, um, that would be there, Julio, Rob Base, uh, C plus C Music Factory, Alpha One. Um, we look forward to, uh, visitors coming to the field, but most importantly, giving something our citizens can, uh, uh, come, come stay home and enjoy. So, uh, we'll see you at Festival Park for New Year's Eve to raise our hand in the sky. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, thank you, council. If we can have Ms. Sarah and Gray come in, uh, council. Uh, Ms. Gray, uh, is a nonprofit organization called Home for All, uh, that, uh, met with her, um, several, several weeks or months ago, and I think Councilman Davis as well. But, uh, Ms. Gray, how are you doing? Tell us, uh, in our announcement section, tell us a little bit about your, your nonprofit and, and some of the services you're adding to the community.
Oh, good evening. Um, again, my name is Seron Gray. I'm a twenty-six-year-and-a-half veteran from the Army, who, and I'm excited to share this opportunity that we can bring to our city of Fayetteville. I already know you guys have done a survey to say, and to found out what we needed. We know we need places for people to stay. Not only for the average person here, but for our veterans that are homeless and for our overall homeless at large. You can't drive through our city without being at a stoplight or a sign and seeing a sign saying, "We need help. We need a home." And I know it moves each and every one of you when you go by and you see this. So we know what we need. I'm just hoping for the opportunity to provide it for our city. You know, I was, uh, up this morning because one of the problems we have as veterans is that we have PTSD and we don't sleep very well. And I thought about, well, what can I tell these people that already know what they know? So the Lord told me, "Share your story and why this resonates with you so much." You see, I'm a, come from a family of ten. My mom was a single parent, and her first two children died at birth. And God has a sense of humor because my mom had six other kids and her last two were twins. That's not funny, right? So, um, so when I was growing up, we were extremely poor. We understand poverty like no other. And three of the things that I hope to share with you guys is that through my own life experience, I know what it means to be hungry. I know what it means to be homeless, and I know what it means not to have a safe place to stay. I'll share three stories with you. Me and my twin brother were walking down to school one day. We were probably about seven or eight years old. At a time that you could do that, not now, you know? And because we were poor, we didn't have the proper garments to wear. I didn't have socks on this day. My jacket was light. And I remember walking down to this bus stop and we were crying because it was so cold. And I must, we must have been crying so loud that one of the neighbors came outside and grabbed us and bring us inside. So I know what it means to be cold. We also had a time that, you know, when we, we didn't have a house, we had a two-bedroom house with six kids, two adults. And then when you walked into the house, there was a porch, and then from the porch, there was the house. So all of our siblings, we didn't have any dressers. So all our clothes were in bags on the porch. So we were raced down together in the morning, try to find something to wear, go inside, stand in front of that stove, because that's the only really working heat we had in our house. Because our house was built in the nineteen twenties. And so I know what it means to live out of a bag. As I got older, my mom, she just was tired, straight tired of raising kids. And she told me I had to leave. And so my last year of high school, I moved eight times a year just to try to graduate high school, lived on people's couches. And so what happened to me is when I would go into the house, if there was a significant other in there, they would wake up in the middle of the night and try something with me. So I know what it means not to be safe. We have a society of people here that are cold. They don't have a place to stay. They don't have a place to be safe. They don't. And so what a Home for All will do, we're going to provide a home about six hundred square feet, plenty of space to either put two veterans or a family. I have the backings of Segra, who likes to partner with me to build, help build these homes, which I'm very excited about, at the back ends of my pastor, Pastor Ernest Jones. You know, I know he'll save with you. I'm not going to be here before you long.
Yes.
But we hope that, you know, you know, I was talking to one of your councilmen, and he said, you know, "We have a great American city. We are an innovative city." What more way of being innovative to provide housing that people can not only can afford? In Wilmington, they have a place called Eden's Village, and it was a physician that decided that the holistic approach to healthcare is having a home. Because the door was opening in and out for these homeless, so rising the cost of, you know, all the work that has to be done to keep them. I'm sure that happens with us. Security. These people are out there. We know they're doing drugs. We know they're alcohol abuse. We know there's mental health. Especially for us veterans, we have PTSD. If we have a place that they can go inside and not have to worry about somebody, because we don't do well with others sometimes. I'll just be honest. Being a soldier that has PTSD. And to be in a place that we can call safe, a place that we can call home, a place that we can take our meds and go inside and utilize them, have people to watch over us, because our plan, our plan will provide all of that. And then you guys had this genius idea to build a day center. But they have the resources there, but what are they going to bring them back to? That's where we come in. We'll provide that gap that's here in our city to build a place that they can call home. I have a picture that I want to share with you guys. And, uh, is it on here? Thank you. So this, this, uh, you got it?
I got that.
One thing I wanted to make you notice too, this picture that I gave for all of you guys, this picture that is here is Fayetteville. I didn't grab a picture that was online, a stock picture. This is us in this picture. So this day right here, in June of this year, I got sick, and I was in a hospital for four days. And when I got out of the hospital, I couldn't walk. And I got better, and Jerry Burks posted online saying, "Hey, we're going out to feed the homeless." So I said, "You know what? I'm alive. God is good. I'm going to go out there and help them." So I go out there, and Jerry's like, "You should pray for her." And I had no idea he took this picture. And this lady was stone-cold drunk. And I began to pray with her. And I was telling her, "I want to build a home for you, and I'm hoping that I can go and tell people that we need this." But the interesting thing about God and what he did in this moment, all of a sudden, she wasn't drunk anymore. And she turned around and started praying for me.
Wow.
And so I wanted to share this, that this is our reality, but we have the opportunity to do something, a change that needs to come. So I'm asking you guys to work with me. Give me the opportunity. Be a for-us, by-us, us veterans. I have a whole community. I've served twenty-six and a half years. I know plenty of people that want to walk with me and share their time. This, this flyer right here was made by a disabled vet who took the time to help me and didn't charge me anything, because this is what they're capable of. They want to bring their resources here. They want to give their time. There's a lot of retirees here that want the opportunity to help us.
So Ms. Gray, let me ask you, you have, uh, in closing, real quick, because we have to move on to the meeting, do you have a phone number that people who are interested can contact?
On the bottom of the flyer, we have my, um, we have my phone number, we have my email, and I have a webpage that you can look over.
The nine one oh three oh two nine oh five one?
Yes, sir.
And seron dot gray at gmail dot com. All right. Well, we thank you. Thank you for, uh, the, uh, this great work you're doing, your compassion for the members of our community that, uh, are less fortunate. And, uh, certainly the city has, uh, certainly made a priority of, uh, of working with nonprofits. So we look forward to you speaking with, uh, your council member and myself if need be, uh, to see how we can better support you. But thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And, uh, we wish you.
Happy holidays to you all. God bless.
Thank you. All right. Council item, uh, real quick, council, uh, just wanted to, uh, make a brief announcement about the Christmas Give Back. That'll take place at Segra Stadium on December twenty-third. Vic blends along with Moray. Uh, they're doing, uh, free haircuts, free toys, free food, winter clothing at the Segra Stadium from ten AM to four PM. Uh, please, uh, if you can, uh, be a part of that and, and bring or recommend those to our community who, uh, certainly could use free food, toys, uh, or haircuts. And, uh, thank you guys for positive work you're doing in the community. Item five point O, City Manager's Report. Mr. Manager?
Um, uh, the only thing we had, um, Councilmember Ingram covered it quite well about, uh, New Year's Eve, um, celebrations. We will be, uh, working with Cool Springs to put out some additional information in the coming days about what not to bring and what to bring to the celebration. But we are looking for, uh, a lot of fun stuff. It was interesting though, ma'am, uh, we don't call it C and plus, uh, C.
C and C. You can tell, tell age.
Younger, younger, you know, I was here with it. So it was, uh, Mayor, you're old like me, so we get it. Yeah. But, uh, but thank you for that. That's all, Mayor.
I'm sorry, y'all.
That's okay. And you said Rob Base, right? So it was you guys, you guys.
It takes two.
It takes two.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. All right. Council item six point O is the approval of the agenda. Councilman Wright?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda with the addition of nine point oh two, uh, which is the appointment of the candidate to the vacant position of the council member in District Three.
All right. There's a motion by Councilmember Wright to approve the agenda with the addition of item nine point oh two, which is the appointment of the replacement for Councilmember District Three, seconded by Councilmember Hare. Any discussion? Yeah, you said it right. It's okay. All right. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes to approve the agenda. All right. Uh, Councilman Dawkins?
Agreed, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tim Jensen?
Agreed.
All right. Motion carries. Agenda's approved. Item seven point O is the consent. Uh, council, if, uh, can we get a motion to approve consent? There's a motion by Councilmember Davis to approve consent. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Banks McLaughlin. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes to approve consent. All right. Councilmember Dawkins? Mayor Pro Tim Jensen?
Agreed.
All right. Motion carries. Consent's approved. Item eight point O is the public forum. Uh, this is a time where Fayetteville residents may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the, the forum will not last any longer than thirty minutes, and each speaker will be limited to only three minutes to address the city council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you're here to speak on items that may be on tonight's agenda for the public hearing, ask that you please reserve your comments until the public hearing. So when your name is called by the city clerk, ask that you please come to the podium, clearly state your name and address for the record. Then when you see the light, uh, when you're notified that you have thirty seconds remaining, uh, and then when the time elapses, uh, you will be notified that your time has expired. Uh, again, due to policy restrictions, we're unable to extend the given time. With that being said, Madam Clerk, please call your first speaker.
Yes, ma'am. We have six speakers for this evening. Our first speaker is Mr. Robert Walls.
Mr. Walls, can you hear us? Mr. Walls, are you there? Can you see him on that gen? Mr. Walls? No? All right. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Ms. Shannon Ward.
Uh, Ms. Ward, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address.
Uh, my name is Shannon Ward, and I'm declining to provide my address out of safety reasons.
Okay.
Um, I've been stalkers in the last two years. So, um, I'm going to read a statement, uh, that has been signed by over thirty members of the Montclair community. The Montclair Care's Neighborhood Advocacy Group was formed two years ago, and in that time, we have advocated successfully for things like culvert improvements to address flooding problems in the neighborhood, better traffic safety mechanisms to address the multitude of problems caused by the Glensford Road Widening Project, and a neighborhood park to address the lack of public green space in our neighborhood. With regard to that latter project, Glenn Gemm, Audrey Hauser, Joseph Kananowitz, and myself, all advocated for the park in the following ways. On November twenty-third of two thousand nineteen, Audrey Hauser and I attended the Parks and Recreation Public Forum at Graves Creek Recreation Center. Uh, the purpose of that forum was to help determine what public would like to see funds distributed from the Parks and Recreation Bond. At the meeting, we both provided verbal and written requests for green space in Montclair. Also, early on, uh, around two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, early, I contacted Parks and Rec on the phone and was told that our neighborhood park was at Montclair Elementary. uh, I contacted Parks and Rec on the phone and was told that our neighborhood park was at Montclair Elementary. Um, however, in practice, that was not true because residents could not access the park due to the fact that, uh, there were restrictions imposed by the school board. So Glenn Gumm then contacted the school board to request that they restore neighborhood access to the park, but that request was denied. And then, uh, Mr. Knenevitz and I spoke at the city council meeting on October twelfth of two thousand twenty to explain we had no access to the park and to request that a budget be granted for a park in Montclair. As a result, three hundred thousand dollars was approved for the creation of the Neighborhood Park, but the new park was built next to the one at Montclair Elementary, and residents were recently informed that the school board has once again taken action to cut off public access to the park during the school day, which especially during the winter months constitutes the majority of daylight hours. In effect, Parks and Rec has replicated the exact same problem that they were supposed to address, wasting a great deal of public res- resources and people's time in the progress, process. This fact highlights some serious strategic shortcomings and once again creates barriers to access in a neighborhood whose struggles are already well documented. The residents of Montclair call upon city officials and members of the school board to correct these mistakes and give us access to the green space that we have already fought so hard for. Members of Montclair Cares have been working on this project for over two years, and we don't intend to back down now. I'm finished.
That, oh, thank you, Ms. Ward. Um, Ms. Ward, do you know what councilmember district that is? Okay, no, okay.
Yeah, I'm in Yvonne Kinston's, uh, yeah, district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Ms. Audrey Hauser.
Uh, Ms. Hauser, can you hear us? Ms. Hauser, can you hear us? She says she's not.
She is on.
Okay, Ms. Hauser, can you hear us? Is, you want to, uh, maybe, was it star six? Okay.
She's here. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you. We can hear you, Ms. Hauser.
As per the Americans with Disabilities Act, I ask for extended time due to accommodate my needs. Good evening, Mayor, my, and city council members, my name's Audrey Hauser. I live at eight forty-nine Brighton Road. In two thousand nineteen, I founded Montclair Cares Neighborhood Advocacy Group to revitalize Montclair, and in doing so, I joined forces with Ms. Shannon Ward. We ask that city council intercede on our behalf in order for our neighbors to have public access to Montclair Neighborhood Park from dawn to dusk. Members Ward, Knenevitz, Gumm, and Hauser continue to advocate for us as well as councilmember Yvonne Kinston and Michael Gibson, Parks and Recreation. Montclair Cares has worked and expected to have a neighborhood park built, fulfilling the needs of all our residents by using the green space from dawn to dusk to be able to meet the needs of the young as well as the classics. On ten nineteen twenty-one, Gibson and councilmember Kinston formally announced to Montclair Cares that the school board will not allow public access while school is in session. We were told that the school board will not compromise. Parks and Recreation is in charge of this project. As a teacher, here's a pop quiz. One, why did Parks and Recreation build next to the school? Why weren't safety protocols built into the design? Why didn't Parks and Recreation collaborate with the board's security experts and design a viable, accessible approach for public access from dusk, for, excuse me, from dawn to dusk? The residents of Montclair have lost their recreation area three times. The original playground was wrecked when the school was built on its site. Since security is the main issue, the fence between the school and the park should have been built to prevent visual and physical contact and enhance security to protect students and personnel. Before the park is dedicated, build an attractive, effective, high and tight privacy fence where a mural can be painted, or install no climb fencing, or place webbing on the current chain link fence along with lace tarps. Install security gates with codes. Install cameras. In closing, we need the fence to match function with aesthetics. While protecting students and personnel, we do not want to replicate a juvenile detention center. We need the fence as a strategic tool to extend the hours of use from dawn to dusk as it was intended and meet the needs of almost three thousand men, uh, neighbors living in Montclair. Fayetteville, a can-do city, do it right, please. Or build a park and have the school board reimburse the city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Mr. Hewitt, I don't know the history of this, uh, but did we, if this was supposed to be a neighborhood park, was it taken in consideration about school security issues? And why was it, why was this site chosen?
Councilmember, um, Kinston, as they have said, is intimately involved, and I don't want to step on her toes, just...
So the neighborhood did ask for a park to be done. Uh, there was a collaboration with the school, with the, the land that was there, the land was available, so the park was built. It wasn't until later on that, um, once the fencing was up and they saw children playing, that it was that determined that the hours of operation was, uh, based on when school was open and availability to the neighborhood. So they do want full access, uh, to be able to use the park during school hours, but there's a chain link fence, which at that time came the question of the authority of the children's safety.
So, so, Ms. Manager, are other fencing options, uh, to make that separation more secure? And that's something we could talk about offline, but...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, all right. All right, thank you, uh, Ms. Hauser. Uh, we'll, we'll get some answers to some of the questions. Um, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, our next speaker is Mr. Iman Iranami Mohammed Smith.
The Honorable Minister himself, huh?
Star six.
Uh, Brother Minister, press star six, please. Unmute your phone, can you hear us?
Good evening, God bless you, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes. And calling my honorable members of the city council. Remember, I've been doing this for like thirty, forty years almost. And every one of you who sit on the city council, remember, you are all honorable. So I'm like your, I'm like your elder brother, your elder in the community, and to advise you and make you a better leader. Don't forget the young children, three, four, and five, and six, and seven, and eight years old. And, uh, let's move forward. And don't mistreat Ms. Waddell. Do something special for her. And also, uh, the Black Heroes Museum on Murkison Road, the Red Carriage's old cleaners. We're still moving forward, making progress on that, and we're still improving Murkison Road. I've been planting flowers on Murkison Road, uh, from one end to the other, I guess, for the past fifteen years. Now, Montclair, make a long story short, your biggest problem is more than likely you trying to go and get a Muslim brother or sister who's not well liked and doesn't have a good history. And that's one, been one of the biggest problems in the past twenty years with Montclair. Uh, when there's a lot of friction and fighting back and forth going on, you know, that kind of thing. So don't get no Muslim represent Montclair but me, Iranami Mohammed Smith, to represent Montclair. I know the history of it. And, uh, but in terms of, uh, picking the, uh, the new members of the city council, the North Carolina Legislative Black Caucus, my team, my posse, we're the ones, we're the ones that make sure there's a long-lasting appointment to the city council. And the United States of America, including Fayetteville Fort Bragg, with the leadership of the beautiful Kamala Harris, is run by the legislator, uh, legislature of different states. That's who runs it. It's not the individuals in, in the White House. It's the legislature of Mickey and Michonne, others who run North Carolina, and other legislators, state legislators, who run different states. We are very, very pleased with the progress that we're making and the celebrations. My job is not to be an urban celebration, but my job is to sit on the perimeter and watch you all celebrate sometime. But most time I'm too busy, so I can just watch you celebrate. But, uh, each celebration, including New Year's, separate those who do not drink, those who are religious, those who are Muslim, those who really honor God to the fullest, separate them in different sections so that they can go, they can go, and God willing, I'll stop through and, uh...
Thank you, thank you, Brother Minister.
Have a picnic, this kind of thing, no worry about a drunk man.
Thank you so much, sir. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am, our final speaker is Ms. Barbara Sledge.
Ms. Sledge, can you hear us?
Okay, we have no further speakers, ma'am.
All right. With that, we will move on from the public forum to, uh, the public hearing. And the public hearing, individuals designed to speak at tonight's public hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk before seven PM this evening. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue. At the public hearing, individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement single spokesperson is designated, in by which case the spokesperson, spokesperson may use the entire fifteen minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, uh, you will then be acknowledged to clearly state your name and address for the record, and then you will begin to address the city council. Uh, when you have thirty seconds remaining, you will hear the beeping, and at the end of your allotted time, you'll be notified that your time has expired. With that, uh, Madam Clerk, the public hearing tonight, uh, are, gives the opportunity for residents to speak on matters related to the city and the appointment of the vacant position in city council District Three. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, we have a total of thirteen speakers. Um, our first speaker is Ms. Maya Warren.
Uh, Ms. Warren, are you there?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
All right.
Good evening, council and mayor. I'm coming to you all to speak on behalf of Mr. Mario Benebente. Over the past year and a half now, I've had a chance to work along with Mr. Mario. For quite some time, I've seen a lot of growth in Mario, I've seen a lot of development in Mario. Mario is someone who puts the community first, always has, and I believe always will. Mario is not one to disrespect women. Mario has never been caught up in scandals or anything of that sort that would bring, uh, dishonor to the city council. I believe if Mario is appointed to this seat, that Mario would do great things for District Three and also for the city of Fayetteville. Um, Mario is someone who has advocated for the millennials as well. So definitely to get someone on the council to represent the millennials alongside Ms. Shaquilla Ingram, I do believe would be in the best decision for the city. Uh, slight, you know, mainly because we don't have a lot of representation outside of Mr. Ingram on the council. I do believe that Mario would definitely always put the city, put the city first, put District Three first. Mario is someone who has gone above and beyond for the community. He has done plenty of giveaways, he has donated. Mario is just a family-oriented guy, a community-driven guy, and he would do whatever it takes to make sure the community, uh, needs are met. I would definitely love to see him take this seat. Mario has been one that has been very vocal about things. He is not one to, to stay in the background. Whatever his community says they want or need, he's the one to get it done. So I do believe that he would truly listen to the people that he would represent in District Three and get done whatever it is that they want to get done. He is someone that is accessible to the community, he's always willing to answer, uh, conversations, um, and reach out to those who matter to, to try to help and bring change to the city of Fayetteville. Mario is one that I believe would definitely do his best to make sure that change is brought to not only District Three, but the city of Fayetteville overall. So I just ask on tonight that you truly consider Mr. Mario B. for the appointment of District Three and truly help move forward in the direction of greatness for the city of Fayetteville. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Madam Clerk?
Yes, our next speaker is Ms. Jamaica Graham.
Uh, Ms. Graham, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jamaica Graham, and I live in District Three. I do feel that it would be an egregious mistake to appoint Corinne Keys to this seat. Corinne Keys, I know for a fact, has been very disrespectful to women. I do not believe that he would represent our best interest. I have heard him out of his own mouth say that he does not talk to the hired help. The hired help represents a great deal of our community, and if you feel like you are too big to speak to the hired help, how can you represent them? I know for a fact, I've heard him say several times, that he is a business owner of twenty-plus years. You love to say that you're a business owner, but you have been known to pay your employees under the table, which is very much illegal, but you have not spoken about that. How can you speak to the greater good of the community, but you are paying people and half-paid people under the table? I believe that Mario B. would better represent the community. He is someone who has been seen and has been out in the community. I watched Corinne Keys' interview, and when asked what has he done for the community, all he could say was, he has done the funeral T-shirts. That is not, in my opinion, giving back to the community. I believe Corinne Keys is very self-serving, cocky and arrogant. Only someone that is arrogant and cocky would go on a national syndicated talk show and say it is women's fault why men cheat. Only someone cocky and arrogant would say, that would write a book on how to cheat on your wife or your woman and get away with it. And I just do not want him representing the district that I live in. I have never seen this man out in the community doing anything community-based until he had that fish fry in the area a couple of weeks ago. And I just really hope you guys would look very hard at Mario B. Because I feel like he would be more representative of my district and the community. And I just, again, would say, I do believe it would be a great error in judgment to put Corinne Keys in place for District Three, and I do not feel like he would be a good representative for city council. I just, like I said, I have heard him be very disrespectful to women, and I just do not believe that he would be the best representative for the position. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Mr. Gregory Robinson.
Mr. Robinson, can you hear us?
Okay. Our next speaker signed up is Ms. Sheena Percival.
Uh, Ms. Percival, are you there? You see her online, Jennifer?
Yes, sir.
Okay, our next speaker is Mr. Kenneth Haywood.
Mr. Haywood, are you there? Mr. Haywood, can you hear us? You say no? Okay.
Uh, our next speaker, Ms. DeNois Howes.
Uh, Ms. Howes, are you there?
Next speaker, Ms. Nicole Baez.
Uh, Ms., Ms. Baez, are you there? Can you see her, Jen?
She is.
Uh, Ms. Nicole?
Yes, I'm here, hello?
All right, we got you.
Hi, this is, thank you for the opportunity, and good evening to our great mayor, members of the city council, Mayor Pro Tim. Please forgive me, the great John Lewis stated, "Once you cannot be afraid to speak up and speak out for what you believe." You have to have the courage, the raw courage. I usually don't get on, uh, social platforms, and I definitely have never spoke in front of our city council, but thank you for the opportunity. Tonight, or this evening, I wrote something in preparation for tonight to endorse, uh, my friend and for... my friend and former colleague, Corinne Keys. It is indeed a pleasure to speak on his behalf and on my behalf and my family to recommend him for the District City, City, um, District Three City Council position. He is one of the most persistent and detail-oriented people I've ever met and had the opportunity to work with throughout the years. Corinne has a strong work ethic, and his persistence until a job or task is accomplished is very... Compared to most, it exceeds expectations. It's also a major part of his personality. He has presented himself in the highest professional manner in both appearance and attitude. If selected, you can be assured that he will work with diligence, persistence, and professionalism amongst his colleagues and the members of his community, of our community. His community advocacy for the people that are in need, are in need of jobs is incomparable. General Colin Powell once stated, "A dream doesn't become reality through magic. It takes sweat, determination, and hard work." Corinne is a natural-born leader with a gifted voice. His drive is a match, and his ability to connect with people from all walks of life and from different backgrounds, ethnicities, and socioeconomic statuses are impeccable. I'm a witness that he respects and welcomes people's opinions equally from all directions. Throughout the pandemic, um, even though I am a graduate of Fayetteville State, I was laid off from a position at, at a, a big corporation and um, had to receive unemployment. Um, that gave me an opportunity to work for myself at times, and through that opportunity, um, I, I was cleaning houses and, and doing different uh, jobs within our, within our community as far as maintenance and housekeeping and things of, and things, et cetera. So actually, I believe that he treated me as equally as he would have treated the President of the United States with respect.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Baez. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Teresa Evans.
Uh, Ms. Evans, are you there? Ms. Evans?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Ms. Kelly Rodriguez.
Uh, Ms. Rodriguez, can you hear us? Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes, sir.
No.
Okay.
Uh, Ms. Ally Majet.
Uh, Ms. Majet, are you there?
Uh, Ms. Fabiola Viscara.
How do you pronounce her name? She's not on my list.
Uh, it's... Oh.
Yes, ma'am. You have the floor.
It's Fabiola Viscara.
Oh.
Hello, how are you? My name is Fabiola Viscara. Um, I live in Fayetteville. I've been living here for ten years. As you can notice, I have an accent. This is my first time speaking for the city council. But I just wanted to talk and tell a little bit about my story um, and why I'm supporting Mario Benevente. Well, as I'm mentioning, I am, uh, well, I am from Peru. I moved here ten years ago. I live um, around the Kings Grant area, and I'm a teacher. Um, during the last five years, I noticed that um, the rent, basically rent, and there are different areas that have been concerned about Fayetteville, uh, that have tempted me or started thinking about moving to a bigger city where I can get paid more, where I can afford rent, because I wanna, again, get paid more. And one day I um, met Mario, and I was able to speak with him, and I noticed that we shared a lot of concerns about Fayetteville, our city, and that something has to be done or should be done. So, I also noticed that Mario, even though he is not Hispanic, is doing more things that maybe I could do for my community, and that's something that I really admire from him. So I think Mario would be a best, one of the best candidates to represent minorities because he's always hands-on, I see him in different schools, actually supporting and not just talking or showing pictures, but actually seeing him around the community. So I'm just here to say that I think he's one of the best options that we have for District Three. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Ms. Stephanie Lane.
Ms. Lane, are you there?
Star six.
Uh, if you can star six for us, that takes your phone off of mute.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name's Stephanie Lane. Uh, I live in the Green Valley area, District Three, and I'm calling in to support Mario Benevente to fill the open seat for the District Three City Council. Um, a little bit about me, I grew up in Fayetteville. I graduated from EE Smith in nineteen ninety-six, and I'm also an Army veteran uh, who actually got stationed at Fort Bag uh, for some time during my service. Um, I just recently moved back about two years ago after being away for eighteen years. Um, and I came back to where I grew up at, and I'm very excited to be back in my hometown, and I look forward to having positive changes because I wanna stay around here. I wanna, you know, see my son, you know, get a job, stay employed here, and, you know, end up having grandkids and everything. With that being said, uh, one of the reasons for my support of Mr. Benevente is I wanna see a fellow Golden Bull representing District Three, uh, someone who has roots in this district and knows firsthand what's important to those of us who reside here. Uh, for example, Mr. Benevente has been a servant leader whose work history in the nonprofit world earned him an invitation to the Board of District, uh, sorry, the Board of Directors of the North Carolina Coalition Against Domestic Violence that he now serves on. Um, I believe Mr. Benevente has the passion, time, and energy to serve our district like no other applicant has, as demonstrated by the active role he plays, I'm sorry, he takes rather, in the community, uh, by helping with food drives and supporting local businesses and business owners. Um, and with that being said, I believe he's the right person uh, for this seat, and I know that he'll be most ready uh, to start representing District Three on day one. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Ms. Ally Majet is now on.
Okay. Ms. Ally, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good afternoon. What are you guys doing? How's everyone doing?
Great.
I am repres, I'm, um, I want to uh, represent for Melissa Lane, and I just wanted to talk about how wonderful of a person she is and represent District Three. Um, I'm here in the uh, theme sport over in uh, Country Club North Hills area, and we have known Mrs. Lane for a while now. I've known her through community involvement, through her sorority and other things that she's done in the community. Just like to say that, anything that, that, there's no embarrassment about her disbarment, um, and that she would still bring value to the community as well, um, with her, her morals, her ethics, and her care for people all around. Um, she's a wonderful person, and I just want to speak on her behalf.
Thank, thank you so much, uh, Ms. Majet.
Ma'am, our final speaker is Ms. Erica Wilson Burns.
Ms. Erica, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. We have you.
Hello, all. So my name is Erica Burns. I am a resident of District Three. I live in the Greens, um, location off of Country Club Drive. I am a native of the city of Fayetteville, born and raised in the Rite Out Home subdivision, graduate of EE Smith Senior High School. Um, I am here in support of Mr. Mario B. Um, the citizens of District Three deserve a councilperson with integrity, a person with a heart to serve, and a person that desires to, that change that will be evident in the years to come. So I have, have the ability to meet and or know several applicants, and I've had the opportunity to review statements made by these individuals, and like many other citizens, I've taken the time to research and learn more about each person listed. I've had the opportunity to personally speak with Mr. Mario, and we connected immediately about how important it is for young professionals to engage in public service and community organizations that will help elevate issues we are most passionate about. Mario took the time to come to my home and share his views and aspirations for District Three and the citizens of Fayetteville. He also shared like-minded views on our school system and a desire to see our students thrive beyond the preaching halt we are in now. After reading multiple statements from, from our applicants, it appears that Mario is the only candidate that has articulated a detailed vision that addresses our addiction crisis, affordable housing, and an effort to combat gentrification in our historic neighborhoods, developing plans to service our large homeless commi, community, and seeing the plan through to completion. We need a councilperson that will take, go from start to finish, not just present information to us and then falls between the cracks. We want councilpeople that will be transparent and inclusive in their efforts. It's my hope to have a councilperson to represent District Three that would develop plans that provide choices for our families, that the changes brought to the table will have my children's children in mind. A councilperson that not, that's not afraid to be honest, and as I've noticed, several applicants have already offered uh, inconsistencies. So as an active citizen of Fayetteville, I am very active in the community, PTA president at one of our local schools, the secretary of our district PTA, our first vice president for the Democratic Women of Cumberland County. I'm very aware of the information that comes across your table and mine. And a graduate, uh, as a graduate of District Three High School and a proud Golden Bull, it would be a desire for me to see another like-minded alumni have a seat at the table and ensuring that our neighborhoods are being adequately served. We pray all of you, make a sound decision that will lead to growth for our city and not an attempt to self-soothe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ma'am, we have no further speakers.
All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing. That said item. Counsel will move to item nine point zero two. Um, as stated earlier, and certainly uh, want to preface this by thanking all of the uh, applicants for this position. To have eleven uh, people and citizens who are interested in this position is phenomenal from District Three, so thank you all. Uh, each of you brought a number of positive skillsets to the table. Uh, unfortunately, the council has the tough decision to uh, choose one out of the eleven. Uh, notwithstanding, the appointment will remain until uh, the next election cycle, which uh, today's legal system, who knows when that may be, but right now it may be May. Uh, but uh, we'll keep you informed, but uh, this council member will serve until uh, until the election takes place. For the citizens of District Three, as well as throughout the city, um, a very important decision uh, that none of us have to make. Uh, hopefully, uh, you will understand that we'll do the best, uh, the information we have, uh, but we, it is incumbent upon uh, the citizens of District Three to make sure they get to learn each of these candidates who uh, will uh, submit their names for election when the, when the appropriate time comes. Rules for tonight, I can't, have explained it to city council members. Uh, each one of the eleven applicants is listed alphabetically. I'll call each name. At that time, council member who uh, supports that particular candidate will vote. Um, each council member will have one vote in support of the person uh, that they choose. Uh, we will then tally the votes. This is a vote for, not against any of the candidates, and we will tally that. The top vote getter, uh, if someone reaches the number of five, which is the majority of this nine-member panel that's making this decision, uh, that person will uh, be awarded or, or appointed as the new representative. If the, no one reaches the five, then the top two will move on, and we will follow the similar steps as, as noted uh, for the next round of voting. So counsel, any questions about that? Councilman Davis?
How would the uh...
Vote tallies?
Tallies, boy.
Yeah, the clerks will, will keep a record based on the names uh, listed as we call them, the total number of votes, and, and I guess who, who, which council member voted for what? Okay? Any other questions, counsel? Councilman Dawkins and Jen, Mayor Pro Tim, you, you any questions?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll move forward. And uh, applicants, please forgive me on the front end if I mispronounce your name, charge it to my bad pronunciation and not, not intentional. Uh, the first uh, applicant is Mr. Galamo Ayerby. All right, those who are voting for uh, Mr., is it Ariba?
Ayerby.
All right, Ayerby. Those uh, in support of Mr. Ayerby, please show of hands. Okay? Next member is Mr. Mario Benevente. Those in support of Mr. Benevente? Uh, yes, those running in support was council members Banks, McGlaughlin, Ingram, and Kinston. All right? Uh, Jesse Brunson? They'll let me know. Yeah. Uh, Jesse Brunson, those in support? Okay, number four, those in support of Mr. Mike Dobbs? Okay? Number five, those in support of Ms. Kathy Harrington Gibson? Okay? Those in support of Mr. Antonio Jones? Say two?
Ms. Mayor?
Yes? Mayor Pro Tim Jensen, was that a vote?
I'm good.
Okay. Was that, was that a question or vote here?
That was a vote.
It was a vote, Ms. Councilmember Jensen, Mayor Pro Tim Jensen, that was a vote for Jones?
Yes.
All right, so, all right, let's do this again, just make sure we, we've got our tallies. Uh, those in favor of Mr. Antonio Jones, show of hands, counsel. Those voting in favor? All right, Mayor Pro Tim Jensen? Madam Clerk, did you get that?
I have four, ma'am. Uh, yourself, councilmember Ha, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Jensen, and councilmember Wright.
Okay. All right. Uh, number seven, councilmember Corinne, I mean, uh, applicant Corinne Keys. Those voting in favor?
Dawkins, yes.
Okay. Ms. Melissa Lane? Ms. Lane? Mr. Raymond Maker? Ms. Cynthia Leek? Okay? Mr. John Zimmerman? Okay?
So, ma'am, all uh, nine votes have been cast. Uh, you have three votes for Mario Benevente, you have four votes for Antonio Jones, and two votes for Corinne Keys. So it would be Mario Benevente and Antonio Jones go to the next round for a vote.
Okay? All right. Counsel, we move to the next round. All council members voting. Uh, call the names in similar order. All right? Those voting in favor of Mr. Uh, going alphabetical order, Mr. Benevente, show of hand? Madam Clerk, you good? Councilmembers Ingram, uh, Banks, McGlaughlin, and Kinston, uh, that's all I see. All right, those voting in favor of next applicant, Mr. Jones, show of hands?
Dawkins, yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Jensen, what's your pleasure?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, you get that? Those voting in favor, Jensen, Dawkins, Davis, Colvin, Wright, here?
Yes.
Okay.
So you have a vote of six in favor for Antonio Jones and three in favor for Mario Benevente. So Mr. Jones has six votes, and so that would be your candidate, sir.
All right. So counsel, thank you for uh, that, and it looks like we'll congratulate uh, Dr. Antonio Jones. Uh, Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, uh, as you had planned, I think tomorrow we'll try to get Mr. Pastor Jones to uh, down at four thirty, is that correct?
Yes.
Um, uh, here at the Transit Multimotor Force Swearing Inn um, on Wednesday. Um, on Wednesday as well, we're gonna try to see if we can get him, and you, sir, if you're free for a few minutes, to, um, do an orientation with, uh, senior staff, um, to talk about, um, the important issues in, in front of city council. Any council members that, uh, would, uh, like to attend or have some other things that you think that we'd like to share with him, if you'd let myself or the mayor know, we'll be happy to try to do that as well on Wednesday. But, um, we'll be reaching out to Mr. Jones, um, in just a moment.
All right, thank you. All right, counsel, thank you. Uh, with that, counsel, I, item ten point oh is the legislative, uh, proposed text amendments for the Unified Development Ordinance for Consistency. So I take it that this was the, hello, how you doing?
Good evening, everyone. All right. Good evening. Um, Alicia Moore, Senior Planner with Development Services. The changes that I'm presenting tonight are about just the review and approval procedures for zoning amendments and the legal requirements for statements of consistency and reasonableness. Under the state's general statutes for any zoning amendment, so that's text or map, a statement of consistency must be provided by the review board and approved by the city council. MAP amendments have an additional requirement for a statement of reasonableness. The statutes are clear that the city council must approve these statements. So to make sure that we are in compliance with that requirement, any city council motion to adopt or reject an amendment should make explicit reference to the requisite statement. This is one sixty D six oh four D, which is the state statute that requires the review board to issue that statement of consistency for both text and map amendments. It says that for a proposed text or map amendment, the recommendation from the review, for the review board must include a comment on whether the proposed action is consistent with the comprehensive plan, which for Fayetteville is the future land use map and plan, and any other adopted and applicable plan. Uh, the statute also says that a comment that a proposed amendment is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan does not preclude approval of the proposed amendment by the governing board. One sixty D six oh five covers the governing board statement, which is city council. It says that when adopting or rejecting any text or map amendment, the governing board shall approve a brief statement describing whether its action is consistent or inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. So that's the consistency statement, and for map amendments, which are rezonings, if the action was deemed inconsistent with the relevant plan, then the amendment automatically also amends the future land use map. Uh, the consistency statement is not subject to judicial review. Paragraph B says that for rezonings, which are those map amendments, a statement of reasonableness is also required to be approved by the governing board. Um, it has this non-exhaustive list of factors that includes the impact on neighboring properties as well as the public interest. Paragraph C says that the statement of consistency and the statement of reasonableness uh, may be considered and approved as a single statement. In summary, text amendments require just a statement of consistency. MAP amendments require a statement of consistency and reasonableness. Text amendments are straightforward and involve just that one section of the UDL, which is thirty dash two C two. MAP amendments, however, cover all changes to the official map. So that's straight or standard, uh, rezonings under section thirty dash two C one, conditional rezonings under thirty dash two C four, and planned developments under thirty dash two C three. Because city council can adopt the zoning commission's recommendation as part of the consent agenda, the procedure gets a little bit more complicated with map amendments than for text amendments. But I will come back to that. Okay, this is the process for text amendments. Planning Commission holds a planning, holds a public hearing, and issues a recommendation to city council, which includes a statement of consistency as required by one sixty D six oh four. Then when city council reviews the application, the motion to adopt or deny it uh, should also reference the statement of consistency to make clear that it's in compliance with the statutory requirement that the governing board must approve the statement of consistency. If city council agrees with the planning commission's assessment, then it can approve it as is, or council can revise the statement and then approve it. Okay, map amendments, as I mentioned earlier, are a little bit more complicated due to that special local legislation that allows city council to approve a rezoning as part of the consent agenda. So first, the city, uh, the zoning commission reviews the application and issues a recommendation that includes a statement of consistency and reasonableness. Uh, then at, at two A, there's no change, uh, to the existing process for, for these situations, which is if the zoning commission recommends approval and there's no appeal, then the city council's approval of the rezoning on the consent agenda is deemed to include approval of the zoning commission's statement of reasonableness, of consistency and reasonableness. Similarly, if the zoning commission recommends denial of the application and, and no appeal is filed, then the action recommended by the zoning commission, along with its statement of consistency and reasonableness, are deemed the final action of the city council. So there's no, um, public hearing or motion at all. Under two B, this is the situation where city council has to actually approve that statement of consistency, uh, of consistency and reasonableness. Um, and this is when the city council holds a separate vote on the proposed amendment, and in that case, the motion to adopt or deny the amendment should include approval of the statement of consistency and reasonableness. And again, city council can approve any version of that statement, including if there are multiple versions of the statement or if council, if council makes revisions. All right, so that was an overview of the process, and now this part just focuses on city council's motion. And the question is, when should city council's motion make reference to and approve a statement of consistency and/or reasonableness? The short answer is anytime there's a motion to adopt or deny a proposed zoning amendment. So text amendments are straightforward. Planning Commission makes a recommendation, uh, that includes a statement of consistency. When city council reviews the proposed amendment, the motion to adopt or deny it must also approve, uh, a statement of consistency. So for example, I move to adopt the proposed amendment and to approve the consistency statement provided by the planning commission. MAP amendments, city council's motion should include approval of the statement of consistency and reasonableness whenever it holds a separate vote on the proposed amendment. And this occurs in two scenarios. One is when the zoning commission recommends approval and the item is placed on the consent agenda, but council pulls it to vote on it separately from the other items. Two is when the zoning commission makes a recommendation that is appealed. In that case, it goes to a public hearing, and when city council moves to adopt or deny the underlying proposed rezoning, the motion has to include approv, has to include approval of the statement of consistency and reasonableness. All right, so, options of recommendation. Uh, the options are, uh, adoption of the proposed recommendations, which is the recommendation by staff and the planning commission, denial of the proposed rec, uh, proposed text amendments, revisions and adoption of the proposed text amendments, or remand of the proposed text amendments back to staff for further consideration. Because these procedures are required by the state, they're essentially administrative changes, and both the staff and planning commission, again, recommend adoption. Thank you.
All right, uh, do we have a question? Mayor Pro Tim Jensen?
Um, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, that wasn't supposed to be up there.
Oh, okay. Counsel, any questions? So I do have a question. So basically, if I understand this correct, there were a number of, uh, changes that we need to make to the local ordinance that made it, uh, in sync or consistent with the state, uh, statutory changes. Is this one of those housekeeping items?
Yes, it, it is housekeeping. It wasn't presented at the same time as the other ones, 'cause it required a little bit more nuance, but yes, it is part of the greater batch of, um, state requirements under one sixty D.
So how are we doing with those changes? And is it, is it possible that we can bring all those con, conformity changes at once? Because it, you know, we have to follow state law, so we can't have something inconsistent. So it's not really an item that counsel has a choice, but I, I do understand the formality of it. Is there a way that we can bring all of these at once? Or, or a majority of them, instead of the onesie twosies?
I, I believe this will be the last one. I don't want to say that conclusively, because as we go through the regulations, sometimes something comes up and we say, actually, it looks like, it looks like maybe we need to make another adjustment, but it seems as though we might.
Okay.
We might be done with them. I'm hoping so, but I don't wanna make any promises.
All right. All right, Dr. Newton, is that, you had, you were coming in?
You heard the correct answer, but what I wanted to clarify with that is there are some other development regulations that the state has passed in current, uh, legislation that is going to necessitate some other changes, but not due to one sixty D. And we have worked with Attorney Harper on what you have in front of you, because this is a confusing one. But if, if you didn't catch this from her presentation, this is actually gonna make it easier when you have to now currently read all those things and come up with your findings. We're gonna already have that ready for you.
All right, well, we appreciate that. All right, counsel, any other questions for Dr. Newton? Count, Councilmember Ingram?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, you.
No, no, you need to, you need to open and close the public hearing.
Oh, okay, sorry. All right, so, oh, the legislative hearing. Where's my language for that? All right, so with that, we'll, we'll open and close the legislative hearing. No speakers, correct? All right, so, uh, Councilmember Ingram?
I'd like to move that we approve the proposed text amendment, amendments to the development ordinance for statements of consistency and reasonableness for zoning amendments pursuant to, to the North Carolina original statutes.
So it's a motion by Councilmember Ingram to accept, uh, and to, uh, support the changes that's presented, and seconded by Councilmember Wright, and a discussion on the motion. All right, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Those in favor? Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Jensen?
Right.
All right, and I think Councilman Dawkins has jumped off. All right, all right, motion carries. Or is there a motion to adjourn, counsel?
Thank you.
All right, have a good evening. Thank you all.